Hi, I'm Randy Hutchins. I'll be chairing zoning board meeting here this evening. Go ahead and call the meeting to order for Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board on Wednesday, May 25th, 2022. At this point in time, I've turned it over to staff to do roll call, excuse me, roll call, please.
John DeGrand. Terry Attwell on Zoom.
Here.
Donna Getzmann on Zoom. Donna Getzmann on Zoom. We'll come back to her at the end. David Wolf is not present. Randy Hutchins?
Present.
Darren Shakesh is not present. Rebecca Barton on Zoom?
Present.
Brian Walker is absent. Jason Cooper?
Present.
And let's go back to Donna Getzmann on Zoom.
Present.
Very good. We have a quorum.
Very good. We do have a quorum, so we'll move forward into the next agenda items. Considering the agenda that we have here this evening, are there any add? To the agenda? If none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
John DeGrand, motion to approve.
I hear a second.
Jason Cooper, second.
Agenda is approved. At this point in time, like to ask for any disclosures of conflicts of interest this evening?
None, none.
Very good. Any disclosure of external contacts or discussions?
None.
None.
Very good. Let's move on to the next agenda item, approval of the minutes. For April 27, 2022. Are there any as, deletions, corrections for those meeting minutes? If no, do I hear a motion to go ahead and approve those meeting minutes?
Terry Attwell moved to approve.
Rebecca Barton, second.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Sign. Okay, approval in the minutes. All right, so at this point in time, the board reports, so I'd like to see if there's a Board of County Commissioners actions. So Sean?
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pennley, Planning Staff, I would ask first, before we begin the board reports and the public hearing items, I would like to have Sheri read a virtual meeting statement, since this meeting is in person, but it's also, we do have participants on Zoom. I'd like to read that statement first, if we could.
Very well.
This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with the zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, call 913-715-1700. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raised hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Pennley?
Yes, thank you, Sean Pennley, County Planning Staff. For the board reports, I wanted to mention that there were three applications considered by the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board on April 27th. Those three cases were recommended for approval by this board, and those will be scheduled for the June 2nd Board of County Commissioners meeting. So no action since the previous meeting by this board. Then if you'd like, I can go on with the planning commission's activities, since they're tied in with the B O C C. On May 10th, the Planning Commission recommended amendments to the draft regulations for utility scale solar facilities. Planning Commission made recommendations to forward those on to the Board of County Commissioners for final consideration. A special meeting is scheduled for the B O C C on June 6th at 2:00 P. M. in this meeting room for consideration of the utility scale solar facilities regulations. That concludes board reports.
Very good. Any questions for staff? All right, very well. Let's move on. Let's move on to the business before the board here. For application number S W 22-192-P D P slash F D P. Who do we have from staff will be presenting that this evening?
Yes, this is Michelle Lineger, Planning Staff. This item before you tonight is a preliminary and final development plan for an Amazon facility. This is the aerial that shows the subject property. It's located in New Century Air Center, just west of New Century Parkway and north of 157th Street. Here's an aerial that is closer, shows the existing conditions as you see it today. Site is approximately 38.9 acres in size in zone P E C 3, which is a planned light industrial district. The revised plans are triggered due to changes inside the facility that will require additional employees and therefore additional parking and site circulation changes. I'm going to go over the changes to the site by the side of the building. That way we can focus in on those specific areas. This is the north side of the building and the site. Currently, there is no parking in this area. It's only just a paved access drive. And the access drive will be modified to include a row of parking on each side of the drive. And the parking closest to the building that's shown in dark gray, that is the only area that will be adding new pavement. Otherwise, the pavement that is currently out there will be utilized. This is the south side of the site. Currently, there is one entrance drive, which is on the very east corner of the site. This is a drive for an entrance and an exit and for for the truck traffic and employee traffic. It's also an existing parking lot directly adjacent to the building. The proposed changes are to modify that existing driveway to be truck traffic only. As you can see, there's no connection showing on this plan to the employee parking area, so that'll be truck traffic only. And the trucks will be able to only access the east side of the building. And then 157th Street is proposed to be extended. And then you can see two new driveway accesses to the road. And then another new parking area, double row of parking area, like what was shown on the north. There's a current access drive there, and that existing pavement will be utilized. And what you see in dark gray is new pavement. These dark gray areas, both on the north and south side of the building, are the only new pavement areas. Here is the proposed street extension. So you can see it's an extension of 157th Street to the west with a curb and then a connection down to 159th Street. This is not finalized, and the applicant will work with county staff to complete this, since it is offside of the property. And being that it is county airport property, the county will work to work with the applicant to get that installed. The design and installation will be paid for by the applicant. Here's the west side of the building. I have this orientated sideways, so north is actually on your left. That way it matches the elevations that are on the bottom. I know it's a little hard to see, but you get the idea. This is previously a truck loading dock area and is proposed to be changed to employee parking only. So you can kind of see on the elevations. And over, some of the over the head doors have been removed, are proposed to be removed. The loading docks are being removed. Additionally, at the very right, I'll bring up my cursor right here, where there's a circle and a square. This is a proposed water storage tank and pump house that will be added. These are necessary for the sprinkler system in the building. With the additional number of employees in the building, the sprinkler system needs to be upgraded. So those will be provided. And if you noted on the landscaping plans, there are proposed screening, some trees along the, what'll be the south side, so you won't, it'll help screen that from the road. And then last, the east side of the building. This time, north is on your right, again, to match the elevations. Currently, this is a loading dock area with truck parking. The only changes here are the modification to the driveway entrance for truck-only traffic. And then on the north or right side of your page, a fence will be installed with a gate. This will restrict the truck traffic from going north and going around the building. It will be that these large semis are restricted to this area only. Additionally, employees won't be able to get into the truck traffic area either. The goal is really to separate those two different uses to alleviate the potential for accidents and such. Staff does recommend approval of the revised preliminary final development plan for the M C I seven, Amazon M C I seven, located at 27200 West 157th Street, based on the findings in the staff report with the stipulations. And here is a motion. If you see fit to use it, I can stand for any questions. The applicant and their staff are here to address any questions also.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of staff from the zoning board? Do we have any questions on Zoom from the zoning board?
None.
Thank you. Hearing none, let's move on to the applicant. We have the applicant present tonight. Okay, the applicant shall provide a brief review of the proposal. They'll have 10 minutes to present. At the end of that presentation, we'll have the opportunity to ask questions. If you would, sir, state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Richard Elsie. I actually live at 3629 Oak Grove Court, Grandberry, Texas. I am the construction manager on behalf of Amazon for this project, M C I seven. Our goal here is to, because of our growth, our planned growth, is to separate as much as we can our truck traffic from our associate traffic. And we're trying to utilize the extension around to 1959th to allow associates to drive in from that direction and allow trucks to come in off of where they are today on 157th. And that way, they would be completely separated. There wouldn't be any need for the associates to be on 157th, because they really, they could go down further and access the driveway, but we're trying, we're going to teach them and educate them to come in off of the 159th street route. We feel like that we're in a situation, especially the driveway, the way it's designed and built today, is somewhat precarious for them to understand, because it's not, not very well divided between which road they need to take. They don't realize that there's two lanes on the left-hand side of the road divider, and that's where the cars are supposed to go, and there's one lane for the truck. It's hard for them to understand that. I've made that mistake the first time I drove up. So we were trying to make, divide that off from the associates, so we make that completely truck traffic and truck traffic only. The the other improvement has to do with the sprinkler system, which is the sprinkler tank, a water tank, and also a new fire pump, because of the fact that as we grow, the demand for that sprinkler system has grown. And it, and we do have some water issues for consistency, so we want to create our own tank, so we don't have any fire issues if it ever comes a need be. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Many questions from the board? Hearing none.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the public comments section specific to this proposal. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. If, if you would, please state your name and address for the record. If you share some of the same concerns, comments, or points that others have already made, we ask that you please refrain from repeating those comments. And just simply state instead, for the record, that you agree with the previous individual's comments. So with that, I would like, do we have a list or just? Anyone? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience specific to this project here that would like to make any public comments? Okay, ma'am, please step forward. Feel free to go up to the microphone.
My name's Sharon Carroll. I live at 15555 South Moonlight Road. My property backs up to the west side of the building. I am concerned, they have no mention of lighting, what will be changed, if it will be directed towards the building or? And I would like to know about the drainage, what they, how they're going to take care of the drainage off of the new proposed plan. Is there anyone that can tell me what they, how they, what they plan on doing with the lighting?
Staff, following public comments, we could respond to all the comments and questions. Staff will take a list of questions, and we can respond following all public comments.
All right, that'd be fine. The proposed new, you know, concrete and everything, the one thing I would like to know is where the drainage is going to go. There, I didn't, no mention of ponds and whatever, so that would be one of the things I would like to know about as well. And you say you'll get back to me?
Yes, following public comments, staff and the applicant will provide responses to any question.
Thank you.
All right. Is Don Carlson in the audience? Don, would you like to make some comments tonight? Okay. Thank you. Next is Keith Correll. Yeah. Very good. Thank you. All right, we have Loretta. Okay, thank you. Rick Elsie? Okay, thank you. Brett Larson? Okay. Trent and Sharon, is it greasy? Green, sorry. Okay, thank you. Joyce Whittier? Thank you. And then Mike, I want to say Chance.
Yeah, my question is, we're going to expand the non-permeable surface of parking lot. We've already had a catastrophe on our property directly to the west, the last time you developed, but when Amazon was built. And I want to know if the retention basin and the runoff is going to be addressed? Or are we just going to add non-permeable surface with the same amount of retention? That's my question.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to make public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom who would make any public comment? Very good.
No.
Well, we'll go ahead and close the public comments section. I think there's some very good questions that, you know, Miss Leary, if we could get some responses back to them, there's one, two, potentially three. I captured a lighting question. I think here's a drainage and a runoff question as well.
I will, I can address the lighting question. There's no new lighting proposed beyond what is existing on the site. For the stormwater questions, I will throw that to the applicant and their engineer, and they can address those for you.
Very good. Would the applicant like to step forward and address that question, please?
Thank you, Brett Lordson, Olson, 7301 West 133rd Street, Overland Park. As the applicant's civil engineer of record, glad to answer those questions. We'll start with lighting. No new lighting is currently proposed with the, with the project, so that remains unchanged from today's condition. Regarding the drainage, and Sean and Michelle, if you could put up the site plan, if we talk from a picture, it'd be helpful. Yeah, that's good. Yep. To answer questions on drainage, this was discussed extensively with staff and as well as the airport and the county, understanding the concerns and present day conditions of the facility. Our drainage study that was required and accepted by the county addressed a couple items. Number one, the condition of the current pond will need to be reevaluated, cleaned out, free of debris, so that it functions properly. Number two, the roadway extension and the minor amount of impervious or pavement surface being added with the parking, that was fully analyzed for detention. And the, compared to previous studies, there is excess capacity for the minor addition of pavement to the project, specifically regarding the roadway, if we could go to the roadway slide. Yep, right there. Today, before the road exists, there are two locations where stormwater runs. One, toward the middle top, where there's a dashed oval. Oh, that'd be great. Yeah. Thank you. In this area, water goes there and across, and across. And two, drainage naturally flows to this corner and across 159th. Current design, and the beauty of this is it's, it can be flexible. The current design, which is a good stormwater practice, maintains existing patterns. Where water goes today, you want water to go in the future. So we have two facilities that act like a bathtub. The water goes in, it's controlled and slowly released, so that it is less peak fault, peak rate than before. And we show two locations. The flexibility with this site in particular is we have the flexibility of using two or one location in the, in the south corner here. All to say, the drainage heading west and south can be controlled and/or eliminated entirely. This is, this is something that we've discussed with staff, and there are options. The current design follows existing patterns. So that's, that's the summary on drainage.
I'll go ahead and open it up for questions from the board. I think one question I've got is, there's mention by the public that there was a previous issue with drainage. Has that been resolved? Do we have that drainage issue fixed?
This is Sean Penneth, County Planning Staff. With this development, the applicant is going to be analyzing all of the detention requirements for this proposed development. That will be analyzed. And as the applicant indicated, there is an existing detention facility on site. That will be cleaned out as part of this requirement. In addition, as proposed here with this road extension, the plan is for the stormwater to be managed according to the proposed stormwater analysis. We do have Public Works staff, I believe Martin Donjura is also available on Zoom. He can answer any specific questions, but as it relates to this proposed development, the applicant is proposing stormwater management to address all required stormwater requirements.
Do we have, do we have that captured properly that, or approval would be dependent upon making sure the retention ponds cleaned out, making sure the flow and the capacity meets the expectations and the requirements of this plan?
If you look on the stipulations, there is a stipulation to, your stipulations are on page eight of the staff report. There is stipulation to maintain and the existing detention to the original design, which is what the applicant talked about, removing the self voluntary plants and such. We have our stormwater quality management plan. There's a preliminary stormwater drainage study that's been accepted by Public Works. And then they will submit a final stormwater plan prior to the, where is it? Prior to occupancy. So we should have, we should catch everything with those stipulations. And these have been crafted with the help of our Public Works staff. And again, Martin's on if you have any specific questions for our Public Works staff. I mean, what they, what they have proposed and what they have shown in the study meets the standards for the stormwater quality management plan and treatment plan. So those.
Okay, so it is the belief of staff and Public Works that once they complete this final plan, there would be sufficient, everything will be cleaned out. There'd be sufficient capacity to handle all. There'd be sufficient capacity to handle all the runoff and eliminate the issues that their neighbors are experiencing today. Is that correct?
This is Sean Pendley with Planning Staff. I cannot answer any issues that the neighbors have with drainage on their property today. But what we can say, staff has analyzed this proposed development, and they will be maintaining all required stormwater on their site that meets all the stormwater management requirements. And that includes additional development with future conditions of a road to the south. All of the stormwater will be addressed and managed properly according to the stipulations or approval of this final development plan for this development. I can't speak to any issues that there may be on adjacent properties. But what we can say is that this development, as stipulated, will maintain and manage all required stormwater for their development. So it may be helpful if, if Martin is available, if he can maybe answer any other specific questions to that. But that's what I would say from a stipulation standpoint. They're, they're maintaining all required stormwater onsite.
Want to open up to other questions from the board?
Yeah, John DeGrand. You say there's a current retention basin on the property. Where exactly is that located? I don't really, from the pictures, I really can't.
On the west side of the building. Nope, number four. It is between that parking lot and the, that burn with the trees on it. It's a little hard to see because you're not seeing the dimensions. It is shown on the plans. Your packet. You look at.
Oh, it's Jay Leitze. Good. Happy to. It's, it's right in this area here, right? Am I correct?
No.
To the right? Just, oh, sorry.
You're fine. It's right in here. Is the retention area. Know if you can see it on any of these. You can see it on your, on your plans. There's, there's contours that it shows, but it's, it's right in this area.
I'll ask the gentleman that. Which one of these properties to the west is yours? If you don't want.
Please, if you would, just state your name and address again for the record.
Jensen 15665 Moonlight Road. And I own the 30 acres directly the west or south. This is south, isn't it? West, okay, west. And the retention basin's right here. And the original design was a holding basin. And they changed it during the development to a dry bottom. There's hardly any retention. And with the rain that we've had in the last two days, I get the full shot of all of this non-permeable surface onto my property. What used to be a nice little trickle turned into a river. We brought hydrologists in from Chicago and sued the county. Because basically you've, you've destroyed my 30 acres. My pond overruns, and I got a river every time we get a heavy rain running into my pond. And so it wasn't, it wasn't adequate. The last time, when Kimberly Clark developed this, and it's not adequate now. And I don't care how much more non-permeable surface that you add, how much little two lane road you add. It's, it's just going to be worse. So this all comes through a four foot pipe right onto my property. This was originally designed to be a wet bottom holding basin. They changed it because they didn't want to have standing water for water foul within airport. Well, there's standing water all over that airport. Basically, they saved about $50,000 in excavation costs for Kimberly Clark when they developed it. This all came out in the discovery and the lawsuit. By the way, we lost. And the judge found that, that we sued the wrong people. That we should have sued Kimberly Clark instead of the county. And this is what I'd like you to know. This little strip of land right here does not belong to Amazon or Kimberly Clark. It belongs to the county. You can go look at the tax records. So our lawsuit technically was correct. We sued the right people when we sued you. And unfortunately, the statutes, by the time we found that out, the statutes had expired. So anytime we're talking about water, I'm going to tell you right up front. I don't trust the county. I don't trust Public Works because I live with the results. We can sit here and talk about our engineering and that we've had the experts study it. And I've lived with, I've lived with all these studies on my 30 acres for the last 15 years.
Other questions from the board, John?
Yes, I would ask Michelle or whoever is the quote unquote cleaning out of the retention basin. Will that help? I mean, will that take care of the problem?
This is Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. I would first ask either Public Works staff if they could answer any questions on that. And then also the applicant. This is something that we were aware of, that there is a request by adjacent property owners to address, you know, the, the development addressed the required stormwater. I can't speak to the specifics of how that'll affect that property. But as stipulated, Public Works has stated that that would meet the requirements. Certainly, we could have Public Works, if they're available. I don't know, Megan, if you could tell if Martin is available?
Yes, Martin is available, and he should be able to unmute himself. Also, can I ask everyone speaking to please speak close to the mic? So it picks up the sound for everyone listening and attending virtually and for our transcriptionist.
And so in addition, if Martin can answer any questions, that, that would help. And then also, we certainly, again, we could ensure that, make sure that the, this development does, in fact, as stipulated, meets all those requirements. But certainly see if Public Works staff could elaborate on the details for stormwater.
John, this is Martin Donjura with Public Works. Thank you, Commission. With this application, we've reviewed to make sure that we do not have any additional negative impact in terms of storm drainage. We've looked at the plans and what is being proposed to the applicant. And we have put conditions of approval. And when the road construction plans are submitted, Public Works is going to ensure that the storm drainage being proposed with the road construction will be able to meet the county requirements. And no negative impact is going to, to come out of it.
Randy Hutchins, I guess you had mentioned additional negative drainage issues. The question I've got is, do we have a drainage issue today? Are we addressing the issue we have today? I'm not interested in additional. The question is, do, have we fixed the issue that exists today?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm not aware of any issues that have been brought up to Public Works. This is the first time I'm hearing of this issue.
Hey, Randy, this is Terry Atwell.
Go ahead, Terry.
Hey, um, you know, I vividly recall from years ago, you know, that there was a drainage problem back there. You know, granted, it was Kimberly Clark's issue. But I'm wondering, can we get Amazon back up to the podium and see if there's something that they can do to help address it since they are occupying the building? Because, you know, let, let, let's do what's best for everybody. But if, if that problem didn't ever get corrected that I was aware of from years ago, we need, this is the perfect opportunity to try to get that done. So what, what, what would Amazon be willing, you know, to try to do, to try to correct that problem? And again, I understand that it was a Kimberly Clark issue, but it's not a Kimberly Clark building anymore.
Yeah. Randy Hutchins, here's the situation we have, right? We, we hear there's an issue. We want to make sure we do the right thing. But quite frankly, I don't, I haven't, I don't know what the issue is. And I'm uncomfortable in this position moving forward until, number one, I got the issue quantified. And then, two, we can address it with the engineers, et cetera, to ensure that, you know, we're not doing further damage. So how do we, how do we move this forward? And Sean, can I call upon you for recommendation here?
Sure, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. I certainly understand the issues and concerns of the board to make sure that all those issues have been addressed. I think it is Ms. Atwell indicated, it would be helpful, I think, at this point for the applicant to try to answer any questions of what additional mitigations could be provided to alleviate these concerns. Certainly, we could have the applicant address that. However, then if the board's less concerned, we ask the consider, to consider possibly continuing this to address those issues or have the applicant make sure that these issues are addressed prior to approval by a Board of County Commissioners. So those are the options. But certainly it would be appropriate, I think, to ask the applicant if they have any additional suggestions or proposals how to address the concerns.
Yeah, because as we sit, Randy Hutchins, as we sit here today, this is the final for the zoning board. So it's not going to be, it's not going to come before us. So it wouldn't, in fact, go directly to the county commissioners. And so to your point, Sean, would you hold sending this to the county commissioners until the project is complete to where everybody is comfortable? We have addressed the issues at hand, if there are such issues?
Certainly, that is a, an option for the board to recommend that those issues be resolved prior to approval by Board of County Commissioners so that have the applicant address these concerns. That's one option. Another option would be to continue this application to the next meeting to allow the applicant to address those issues and bring it back. Certainly, those are two options available.
Okay, one, one thing I'd like to do is, if, if you will, it's my correct? Mike, can we ask you back to the stand and help us understand what the actual issue is that you see it? And if there's anything that you could recommend, you know, on the record that would fix the issue? So we could try to find a resolution to this?
Yeah, I think, I think the resolution is to go back to the original design with a wet, with a wet bottom detention basin that actually captures a large quantity of water and releases it slowly. What you have now is about a three or four foot deep retention basin. And the minute it hits the top of the concrete spillway structure, everything coming on to that 40 acres now is coming through a four foot pipe onto my property. That was originally designed to be a wet bottom and to hold a lot more water. And I think, I think that, and then actually having an, a spillway design that doesn't just let the full, the full amount come through, but actually incorporates an emergency spillway that runs it out to the south side of the property here would be the proper way to do it, the way it was originally set up. We know, we're not arguing that, that the waterway comes through my property. That's not the problem. It's never been the problem. A local farmer, Kenny, used to farm that. So, and, and he was able to farm it. He was able to farm that waterway. What's changed is the amount of water. It's been concentrated and released in a large, in large vol, a large volume across our land. It's actually cut a creek bed now. So you couldn't farm that if you wanted to now. So they, so it's tricky when they say that the water's in the same pathway it is. It's just concentrated and coming in a much higher volume. It's been concentrated, instead of running across grassland slowly and filtering down into our pond. It's been gathered up and shot out of a four foot pipe, if that makes sense.
And Randy Hutchins, my today, is the water largely maintained within, we'll call it the cutout or the gully, whatever it is today? Or is it falling outside of the, the waterway?
No, with the amount of rain we have now, I'll have a, I'll have a 15 to 20 foot wide river running across my pasture. And I haven't, I haven't been back there. But we just let everything grow, trees and everything else, to try to, to try to keep it from silting my pond in. There's been a lot of damage done. I, I had the pond cleaned out. It's all been silted in. Besides, this is kind of fun. I get a tell on the county. If you enlarge this a little bit here. I'm a contractor, and I know all about fines and silt fences. And apparently, those fines and silt fences only apply to private people. There's a big pile right about here. It was raw dirt with no silt fences. And that ran across my property into my pond. Right after I'd spent about $50,000 to have it cleaned out, have a nice white rock surface put around the outside of it, planted trees, it killed all the trees. So needless to say, I wasn't very happy. So the, uh, yeah, you can't see that. Oh, let's see, maybe we can see it right here. It's right there. Just a big pile of dirt. Now, just raw dirt, and it was just left, you could see mud running across the gravel road onto my property and down both the waterways and, and into my pond. So I would love, I would love to have this corrected. That would absolutely throw me. My pond is right here. And the waterway, the main one, the four foot pipe is right here. And the gully across my property is right here now, where there never used to be one. In fact, the Carols used to come down and visit us, and they'd drive across that pasture to see us when we'd be back there. Yeah, in a golf cart. You, you couldn't get a golf cart across there if it was four wheel drive.
All right. Thank you, Mike. I'm, I'm just going to capture what I shot it down. If you could confirm here, I got, the, the retention needs to be deeper. One, number one. Number two, there needs to be a gradual runoff. Bill, three, you've got a large gully that's, that's been created. And four, your pond has been silted in. Have I captured that? If those issues were addressed, you would be satisfied with this project? Okay, thank you, Mike. I very much appreciate it. So at least now as a board, we, we understand what the actual issue is. And, and, you know, just to address staff as well as the applicant, you know, we, we, we strive to be fair, right? We don't want anybody to have to burden a financial cost at somebody else's expense. So I guess what I'd like to do is, understanding that, we need to be realistic at the same time. But given that, could you guys work together to see what can we do? If anything, to address these four issues that, that, that Mike has brought up this evening?
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. I think the applicant would like to address some of those response questions.
That'd be great. Sure.
Richard Elsie, representing Amazon.
Thank you.
Don't need to give my address again.
No.
One, there's a lot of history, obviously, that we're not aware of, very candidly. I'm willing to go straight forward and say that. But what I am willing to do, we're, we don't actually control the property. We're actually a tenant to the property, which you are probably quite aware of also. What I like to do is have an opportunity to get in touch with our landlord and have a conversation with them. And then come up with a plan that we can sit down and talk about, about how we get this fixed. Because we're not interested in trying not to do what's right here. We've, we've, the design we've done for the roadway was to make sure that no further water went west of that roadway, except for the little bit of land that's in between the road and property line. Everything else would be. Everything else would be on the other side and would never go into your property. We take it out to 159. So we've really taken some steps to try and make sure that that didn't happen. So, but with that given, that's a small, a small item and I get that. But with that being given, I know that there's, there's a history here that obviously Amazon wasn't involved in on, when it took place. And, uh, we will try and do our best to go in and sit down with our landlord and have a conversation with them. It'll take us a while to do that, but we'll make a commitment that we'll get it, we get it better than what it is today. I'll make that commitment. Don't know what that solution will be, but you'll be involved in that conversation. Like, I can commit to that.
Richard, thank you very much.
Any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Other questions from the board?
Uh, Terry Atwell, I just got a comment. I just want to thank him, uh, for, you know, addressing the concerns and saying that he's willing to jump in and help. Like I say, it was Kimberly Clark's problem. It's not Amazon's, but, um, I do appreciate that he's willing to work with Mike and hopefully, uh, work together, get Mike in the process and try to get that, uh, fixed. So we got a win-win situation.
Agreed. Thank you, Terry.
Certainly. Yes, please.
Keep talking about Kimberly Clark. I do want to remind the county that there isn't any, uh, the water is running across county property onto my land. It's crossing Johnson County land. So it's not, it's not just an Amazon or Kimberly Clark problem. It never has been. Your legal department, uh, inaccurately represented it that way. And we didn't learn about it until seven years later.
Okay.
So the water is coming from Johnson County property.
Valid point. I think staff, we need to make sure public works is involved in making sure that they're part of the solution as well.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. Uh, the applicants, they would be willing to continue this case to the next meeting, next month, so that we have time to resolve these issues with the neighbors and the landlord and issues regarding detention and storm water management.
I think that'd be an excellent idea. Well, with that, I think this concludes this portion of the agenda. John, just to correct me, is there any motion that we?
Want me to make a motion to continue this application to the next meeting on June 22nd? And that would be in this meeting room, same, same time, June 22nd.
Okay, Terry Atwell, I can make that motion. Let me get my bearings here. Okay, Terry Atwell, I move to postpone, uh, application number SW 22192 PDP FDP, a preliminary and final, uh, development plan to June 22nd, 2022.
Thank you, Terry. We do have a second. I'd like to go ahead and, uh, put a devote all in favor of postponing this. State aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, good work, team. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item. Takes us to, um, other business. Is there any other business before the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. I was just going to note that the next meeting is also in this meeting room will be the same format. So we'll have in-person meeting here. We do already have one other, uh, excuse me, we actually have four other applications scheduled for that meeting. We have public hearings, but we'll consider this item as continued first as, as old business. Uh, but it will be in the same location here on June 22nd as indicated and with an option for Zoom, uh, for hybrid public participation in person or on Zoom.
Very good. Thank you. Any other business for the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Terry Atwell moved to adjourn.
John DeGrand's second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Good night. Good night. Alrighty.